Good evening. The special meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our board secretary is not here this evening, I'd like to read a recommendation. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Stephen Ryback as temporary board secretary for this meeting in accordance with NJSA 18A:16-1.1. Need a motion and a second?
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Lang.
Second by Mr. Tufano.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then at this time, Mr. Ryback, you will be our board secretary for the evening.
Take the role.
And take the role call.
Ms. Arminio?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Ms. Kalpanowicz?
Here.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Polori?
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Rutske?
Here.
Madam President, Madam Quorum, let me read the...
Thank you. Yes.
Whereas, whereas, following the...
In accordance with the provisions...
No, I'm sorry.
Number four.
In accordance with the provisions of New Jersey Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted September 20, 2019, out of all schools, home news, Tribune, Cranberry Press, filed with the clerk and the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. So before we go into the public forum, I just want to give you an idea, the public an idea, of the process of how we came to this evening. On August 21, 2019, the Board of Education and members of the Monroe community received an email from Mr. Ken Chiarella resigning his position on the board due to health reasons. At the Board of Education meeting that evening, the board members voted to accept his resignation. The Board of Education has an obligation through state statute and board policy to appoint a replacement member to the Board of Education within 60 days. If we do not do so, the Middlesex County Superintendent is required to come in and fill that position. The board was not allowed to leave the position vacant for the rest of the year. It was something we had asked if we could just forego the last three months of this year, and we were told we could not. Since our board has never been in the position to replace a board member, Mr. Ryback and myself met with the board attorney to come up with a fair process to fulfill our state and policy obligations that would be conducted in strict compliance of the law and in a public setting. A public notice vacancy on the Monroe Township Board of Education was put in the newspapers and in all district buildings on Friday, August 30. While we would normally have a 10-day deadline, it was felt that a 20-day deadline would give the community more time to consider applying. The public notice was also placed before the Labor Day weekend, so that was another reason to extend the deadline for 20 days. There was also an announcement made at the September 3 board meeting underneath the board president's report in regard to the vacancy on the Board of Education. Board members were then asked to submit questions so that they would, that they would like to be considered in interviewing the candidates. Since we had no idea how many people would apply, and we planned to interview all of them on the same day, it was decided to give each candidate approximately 20 minutes to answer between five and six questions, all being asked by the board president. Follow-up questions will be permitted. At the deadline of 3 o'clock PM on Friday, September 20, only one letter of intent and a resume had been received. Therefore, this evening, we will be interviewing one candidate. At the end of the interview, board members will go into closed session in accordance to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 12:4-12 (B) (8). For discussion on the candidate, a majority vote is needed, and any vote taken will be done in public. If appointed, the candidate will be sworn in at the October 3 Board of Education meeting and assume the responsibilities of member of the Board of Education until the board reorganization meeting in January 2020. Steve, do you believe that's the whole thing, or do you have anything you could add?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Ms. Arminio?
When you say majority vote, majority of the quorum, or a majority of the board members?
Majority of the people who were here this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Because there are nine of us, and there are only nine members of the Board of Education at this time.
So it's a majority of everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that is the process, and at this time, we'll go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will adhere to our four minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
Fradeep Malam, 4 Jake Place, Monroe Township. The next meeting on October 3, is this a regular meeting, monthly meeting, or is it a special meeting?
It is a special meeting, that we will be doing regular board, some regular board business. We will be doing, what about the, oh my gosh, what are we doing?
Budget philosophy.
The what?
Budget philosophy.
Yes.
So there will be two meetings in October, October 3 and 16?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any chance that the committee meetings can happen between now and October 3, October 3, or no?
No. I think they're scheduled for the second Monday, or the 14th, maybe? I'm not quite sure. But they've already been scheduled.
All right, thanks. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. I just wanted to express my disappointment. I had some email exchanges where you were all copied. I sent my letter of intent and resume last Tuesday. Somehow, it didn't get to you, and you only have one candidate. I mean, we're talking about transparency. I find it very odd. It was in a self-addressed envelope that the district actually gave me. So where this letter and resume went, I don't understand. I think I'm a qualified candidate. I think I'm a good candidate, and I just want to express my disappointment. Because everything that I send, the district gets there, and this didn't. It just, it didn't sit well with me. I don't think it's a fair option. And like I said, there's only one candidate, which the majority of the board has endorsed in one way, shape, or form for the next election. So it just, it makes me question the transparency of this board. And I've tried really hard to kind of come out here and see that everybody's trying to do its best, but this, this makes me question that. So I just wanted to express that disappointment.
Thank you.
Anthony Presiosi, 8 Equestrian Way. Your resume's probably in the garbage. We know who's going to be on the board. All right? This nepotism and cronyism's got to stop. I see the handwriting on the wall. There's only one person that put the resume in? Well, that's because everybody knows that there's no way they're going to get involved in the Board of Ed. If you have your heart set on certain people being on the board, the deck is stacked. Like someone said, they gave you the application, and it disappeared. That's terrible. Now, there's things on the board, there's, there's things that happen that the board members don't even know. Some of the agenda's not even right, and you're voting on the agenda. And I'm going to bring that up later. Thank you.
We'd only have one public forum this evening. So if you need to bring something up, it needs to be done now.
Prakash Purup, 33, Dana Drive. With respect, you know, always public is questioning transparency. So let us make one simple thing. If someone goes and gives a envelope to the board, district, or wherever it is, it should be stamped, or some receipt should be given, saying that you don't know what is inside it. We received the envelope, this addressed to this, dated this, and give it so that this, this thing shouldn't be there. Okay? So that's my request. Okay? Humble request. Chance should be given, you know? Another one thing, as you said, next October 3 meeting, good, clarified, I think we are going to talk about preliminary budget looks like there. So you might have seen very recently, Edison Middle School, they expanded using modular classes. They didn't even go to the trailers. So that is there. So you all are the officials, please go and see what type of modular classes they have put, and what did they cost? Because what is the timeframe? Because we are going to bring in trailers and put them next year. You know, so what's the cost? So whether, whether we can go with the modular classrooms, it's fine. So that way, they are permanent, so we don't lose this. These trailers are only good for five years. We throw away. So please consider this in the preliminary budget, or explain to us why, what Edison is, and why we can be away from, you know, why we are justifying trailers, cost versus. So I'll, I'll humbly request you all to do that. Okay? So if necessary, Mr. Teig, if you want, I will send that information to Teig tomorrow. It is on the, what Edison did, it is on the news. Okay? I'll send it to Teig, Mr. Teig.
I believe that modular classrooms is being discussed in the ad hoc committees.
No, no, I'm talking about, instead of trailers, can we put modular classes next? If we are putting three-class trailers somewhere, whether we can have modular classes is not nothing to add our committee. It is the discussion of trailers coming. Okay? So we have, we want to know in the budget, because we are going to put in the budget some, certain amount for the trailers. Why not, we are going to ask, why not modular classrooms? Okay? Yeah, that's the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Lou Masters, 9 McKellar Court. I'll address the ad hoc. We are looking into the modular classrooms and modular buildings. The first, we had a proposal, I think the first company, they don't do school construction for modular. There's too many regulations and stipulations, so they actually declined to provide us with more, more of information. But the other thing is, which we were discussing with Jerry Teig, is if you start discussing, or if you start considering modular classrooms, which are pretty much permanent structures, right, you need a lot more money than you would have coming out of the general fund. And we could recommend that as part of the ad hoc. So far, we've, we've, we've kind of added it as a side note, as something we still want to discuss. I know one of the ad hoc members would say that they're easier to build on top of a building with ad hoc, with modular construction, so we're still going to look into it, much like split sessions, that's still kind of tabled. But again, what we're seeing so far is it's a lot more expensive, and if you're going to consume that in your general fund, it's going to impact the students more. If you consume it out of the general fund, you have to go for a referendum, so that's what we saw. As for some of the other statements I was hearing, I mean, anybody could have applied, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, not just get up here and complain about who they think is going to be the member, right?
It was an open invitation for anybody to submit a letter of intent and a resume.
Because to cast dispersions on people for trying to volunteer and do something right, it's just bad. And I have a big problem with that. And again, when I sent mine in, I sent it by email, return receipt, return receipt failed because you guys, that turned off, which is fine. And then I sat and waited for Mr. Gorski to respond. I'm guessing the person I came up before must have sent it certified mail if they wanted to make sure that it, that it was received, right? And they'd have proof? Or did they just put it in the mail and hope for the best? Again, if it's that important to you, make sure it happens. Don't depend on everybody else, and then just arbitrarily say it's your fault or it's somebody else's fault. Take responsibility for your actions. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, then I will close the public forum. And at this time, I will invite Mr. Masters to come up and sit at this nice table with two chairs, if you'd like to bring a partner.
Is that a couch?
I don't know. But maybe Mr. Rutske could give him the other bottle of water?
Oh, I thought you wanted me to give him a third chair.
Another chair?
The chair.
Or a couch. Yeah, thank you. I am in a lot of pseudo-feds, so if I need a water...
I know the feeling. So may we call you Lou, because I think we all know who you are?
Yes.
And most of us know you as Lou. So I'd like to thank you for applying for the position, or the open position of Board of Education member. And this should go pretty quickly. We have about six questions that we have for you. And then if anybody has a follow-up to any of those questions, we'll ask them. And when the interview is completed, we will go into closed session to have a discussion, and then come out and make or not make an appointment.
And please, I don't stand procedure. If you have questions, I'm in the middle, you don't have to wait till the end, because then I'll probably forget what I was talking about. Please ask me right in the middle of the question.
Okay. So the first question is to tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you would like to fill the open position on the Board of Education, and what you wish to accomplish.
Okay, that's an easy question, right? That's the standard introductory question. So I did send in my resume. It details all of my technical and volunteer, but I'll go into it a little bit more. So I've been in Monroe for about 12 years now. Ever since the beginning, I've been volunteering. One of the original founders of the Oak Tree PTA put that together. And from there, I was actually on the board from 2010 to 2013, the Board of Ed. That was the Board of Ed that put in the initial IPAS and some of the new technology curriculum. From there, after 2013, I have been running for the Board of Ed a couple more times. But I've also been on most of, all of the ad hoc committees, growth, technology, curriculum. In addition, I'm now the chair of the ad hoc. I call it the Growth Committee Part Two, but it is the Ad Hoc Committee for Growth again. So that's what I've been doing more recently. My background is in IT, real exciting. Originally, it was anthropology, but I switched over because I wasn't able to get a job anywhere. I work for the Federal Home Loan Bank of New York. It's actually a federally mandated, but not federally funded bank, so I don't have all those great federal benefits that everybody else has. But most of what I do is in the field of affordable housing. We grant loans to underprivileged, poor families so that they may build construction or build homes. That's what I've been doing on my professional side. I can go on? Does anybody have any more? So why do I want? So I actually wasn't 100% sure I was the only one, and that, that is true, there's only one person that applied.
Yes.
That's actually sad. We have so many people that come up and have concerns and comments and criticisms. I thought for sure we would have had 20, 30 people coming up here to apply for this, to try to get on the board and, and make, make a difference. It, it's a big deal volunteering, and I think it's also detrimental to the people that are up here, that nobody wants to volunteer. They just want to tell you how to do things, but they don't want to, you know, get their, get in the game and try to make a difference. So yeah, with that, I think this is one of the most important things you could do, especially when you consider that in the lives of a children, of the lives of the children, this is where the, where they're at their most formative. And what we do now, again, echoes years later. So I think this is probably, and I will not have a problem saying this, this is the most important board that you could be in, in this town. And that's why I want to be part of it again.
And what do you wish to accomplish during your next few months?
So yeah, it's only three months, but it's, it could be a pretty, pretty significant three months. I'd like to partner with Mr. Polori on the advocacy group, I believe it's called, to talk about fair funding. As most of you know, we've been talking about that for years, but I have some different opinions on what we should be doing. I know we should always be fighting for fair funding. To be quite honest, and I've said this in the past, I don't know if it's going to work. If you look back, man, probably to 1975, when this, all of this started, and they, you know, they put in the whole Abbott decision in 81. And if you remember, I don't really remember this, but Florio and Whitman tried to fix the, the failed funding formula. And then, of course, in 2008, we have what we have now. And with their proposing now, either between Sweeney or Murphy, right? I get these mixed up. Murphy's was the one where he was going to dump a couple hundred million, but he was going to keep the caps in, which is what kills us, right? That's what Mike Gorski always talks about. Those two enrollment caps are really what murders us, right? Because we can only, no matter what, we can still only get 10%. Thankfully, that, that's not going to be implemented, but the Sweeney plan, I don't know what you think about that, it removes the caps, it's filtering in the money over, what, five years, 2020 to 2025. He's expecting a great economy, and to be able to focus, I guess, $2 billion of the state's money per year to prop up school funding. The formula is not really changing. They have changed what they're doing. The capping is now called deficiting. I don't know if you've seen that. There's really no good explanation of what that means. Basically, they're taking what your deficit is in your funding, and they're going to give you a percentage of that. To me, that sounds exactly like what the capping was, the enrollment capping. So in my opinion, I, I think both of them are dead on arrival, and I think we really need to get back to it, either attack it as, what is this deficit? What are you guys trying to do? Is this an end around? You're doing basically the same thing. You know, recession or not in the next five years, most, most people think there will be some sort of limited recession. I don't think the state's going to be able to fund $2 billion a year. And even if they do, with the deficit algorithm that they're doing, they'd still only be responsible for, say, what they could cover, say, 10%. So even if we're, again, through the funding formula, are responsible for 15 million, it'll be what the state could actually afford. So again, we're going to be back to where we were, asking the state to fulfill what they've said. You got to remember, this whole funding formula was meant to push school districts towards the middle, right? Towards a adequate education. And since, again, we've heard this time and time again, we're on the other side, the overadequacy, by design, it will not benefit us. So I think we have to start looking at, yes, we could still attack through the advocacy or through our elected officials, which, I don't know what your opinion is, has worked or not worked in the past, but I think we really started out, we have to start looking at different ways of funding. Now, I'm not saying go back to the '75, where we just basically paid for it all out of pocket, and taxes covered almost 100%. We're almost there, right? We're at 86%, but that's what it was back then, right? We just basically paid for it, and that's why the Abbott decisions came in, because you had a lot of very wealthy districts that were funding very wealthy schools, and then you had poor districts that hadn't really poor schools. So, and I'm not a, an advocate for Abbott or against it. They were also being, I guess, maligned in the news media, and they don't, actually, Newark's actually owed $100 million out of their fair funding too, and they're an Abbott district. So again, you take that for what it's worth. Sorry, I drone on, but I'm a little bit passionate about the funding formula. We've been trying to figure it out for years, and we still can't figure out.
Does anybody have a, a question they'd like to ask?
I do.
Mr. Tufano?
Thanks for putting your application. I just have one question. When did you receive response from Gorski? Because you said it was delayed because the system was down. When did you receive a response for your application?
I can tell you almost exactly. Hold on. Well, I could tell you after the meeting. I did get an email.
No, no, I'd like to know now, if you don't mind.
Okay, hold on a second. This won't count for my time, right?
No, it won't. Because, you know, by the time we started, I don't...
No.
That's okay. No.
You're not going to count the time, though?
I don't know what time it's even started.
It was eight minutes. So start it now?
Yeah.
It was received at, hold on.
No, when did he respond?
That's what I'm getting, where I received it. So that would be, it was received by me. So I sent my application in at 12:30.
On Friday?
What day?
September 20.
September 20.
Thursday. Friday, Friday?
That was Friday, yes.
And that was Friday, right? Nothing like waiting till the last minute. And it looks like it was, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with my browser, 12:41? Looks like that? Yeah, that's what it looks like to me. So 11 minutes later?
11 minutes.
That's my best guess right now. When I go home, I can actually print it out for you.
So Friday the 20th, at 12:30?
Yes.
And you received this response at 12:41?
That's what it looks like, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Masters, we have 15 minutes left. So the next one's easy. And what school or district activities have you been involved in?
From inception, again, I've been part of the Oak Tree, which is now the Oak Tree Appleworth PTA. I really enjoy that. I'm also part of some of the rec, it's not really school, but some of the rec soccer curricular activities. From there, again, most of it's been advocacy for the school district, either through ad hoc committees or boards.
Okay, thank you.
And I covered that. I don't want to go through it again. I'd rather take my four minutes.
You are appointed to the Monroe Township Zoning Board by the mayor and the township council. Isn't that a conflict, a conflict of interest during this time of rapid residential building and cost of housing students?
So yeah, I am a member of the zoning board for about four or five years. I've been a member, an alternate of the zoning board. Appointed by the council, not the mayor. Just, I know there's been a lot of incorrect statements going on. It is a council appointment. And no, it's not. There is actually no conflict between those two. And actually, I see it as an asset. As I've said many, many times before, having an advocate or a liaison from the board member, and we used to have, I believe, Mr. Chiarella was the planning board liaison from the Board of Ed, having an advocate for the Board of Ed on that side of it helps us with getting our point across, or even adding to some of the consideration. Now, we can't, because of the impact fees on all those laws, we can't make decisions on the zoning board based on the schools. But again, they can be heard, and we can discuss them. I know even Mark Klein comes to pretty much every meeting and tries to advocate for it.
Okay. I have a follow-up. Ms. Arminio?
You use the word advocate for the Board of Ed as a member of the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
I think you need to elaborate on that. I mean, are you there, you will be there?
So you're there as a member of the zoning board, correct? I see what you're getting at.
Yeah, because if you're, as in, if you're an advocate, so if you're an advocate for the board, you would, you would, it would seem like you'd be speaking for the board. You'd have to have additional permission from the board?
Oh yeah, you would never be speaking for the board. As you know, when you get up and you say, "I'm speaking as a personal, not as a board member," that's how it would always be.
So that, so that's what I'm saying. How could you be an advocate and still be on there?
Well, you don't, so you're not...
Okay, so maybe advocate isn't the right word?
No, it is. And I think we all, all, everybody here is an advocate for the Board of Education, right? And for what we do.
Okay, not officially, then, you're saying? Okay. Yeah, because I wonder how that was going to work, even on the zoning board, I wonder how developers would feel about that.
But again, remember, we used to have a liaison on planning, and they would actually bring in zone, or Board of Ed comments and things like that. Now...
And we know how well that worked.
Well, but again, I think it's something that is a, again, an asset and not a liability.
Okay. Thank you. Number four. Should you, should you support a majority board decision if you were not in favor of it? Please explain.
Wow, that's a good one. So, so no. You're all elected, or everybody's elected or appointed as individual voting members. You shouldn't, again, vote for the overall majority, right? That's part of how this all works. That's actually an easy one, and I find that, again, that's a home run. There's never been a time that I was ever, even on the board or anything like that, where I was told to just go along with the majority. We always voiced our opinions, and we would voice, or we would vote against or for things based on what we believed and based on what was produced, evidence that was produced. Now, that doesn't mean you can't have a discussion to try to come to an agreement, and that's what being part of this collaborative board is, right? You're always trying to come to an agreement and see all the different avenues and different points of interest. Again, that's how the board works. Now, it doesn't mean, that doesn't mandate that everybody has to vote for the same thing in the same way. I don't think it ever has.
Mr. Ryback?
I just, Lou, I just needed a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Once the board votes, the majority of the board votes, let's, in favor or against something, as a board member, would you support that decision?
Oh, yes. Once it becomes something that's been, again, approved by the board. I know we, we had a lot of that last year or so, where there were people posting on Facebook and following up. But again, all it does is demean and undermine the power of the board, right? You shouldn't be doing things like that. Once it's done, you voice your dissent, and then you support the board as a whole. That's what you're here for.
Wow.
What was that, Mr. Tufano?
I said, "Wow, wow."
Why?
I'm amazed at that statement you just made.
Go ahead.
No, I'm good.
No, please, I would love to hear this. And you know what?
I'm good.
You don't have to address any of this?
I don't, I don't even answer questions.
Let's remove the formalities. What did you call me on Facebook yesterday?
You are, you are, you're a coward.
Mr. Tofano?
No, no.
We are here to ask you a question. You're not to ask me a question.
Mr. Tofano?
No, but I wish you would not comment and make these remarks.
I can say whatever I want.
You know what I'm going to say to you?
But I don't have to answer to you.
Wow.
Mr. Tofano, that's not necessary.
That's why I said I'm good.
Okay, and Mr. Masters?
Wow, that's all I'm going to say. Wow.
If you were to get on the board, what do you see as the district's strengths and weaknesses?
So, like I said, I think for a while there, when I was first running in 2010, 29, and I kept using the words lumbering behemoth, right? The board would just move along, not a lot of changes. That's changed now, and it's more of, I call it fighting fires and being more reactive. You have a split board, the majority of which, again, I believe, is working for, in the best interests, and you have some members of the board that aren't. It's obvious, and everybody sees that. And I think what happens is, even for the case of the referendum, when we had the referendum, you had board members that were actively campaigning against the referendum that was previously approved by the board. Back to Mr. Ryback's question, what we said before. Once it's approved by the board, you don't go out and campaign against something the board thinks will actually benefit the students. And I think that's one of the biggest problems we have here. The board is not coming together, even after votes. There's a very, I guess, a very negative connotation about the communication of the board. And again, it's warranted. There's a lot of different comments coming out. You hear different statements after the fact about what's going on or negative, just, again, I'll use it, dispersions about the board, and it shouldn't happen. You're here to help the kids. You've all been elected. You're all volunteering. You're all contributing a lot of time. I've been there. You should be doing your best in the best interests of the kids, not for some political agenda. If you ever read the book Barbarians at the Gate, it's actually, the movie was a lot better, I think. But what happens is, you get, I would say, political money that tries to come in and start to steer the conversation, right? And I think we're starting to see that now, even on a federal level and on a local level, is you have a lot more money coming in into these local elections and trying to steer it from the ground up. And I think that's a major problem, because you're not talking about council elections and stuff like that. You're talking about Board of Ed elections, where the kids are at stake. People are playing political games with the children in this district, and I think once that happens, you have what you call the lost generations of kids, because you're fighting and there's infighting, and people, the board isn't really doing anything, right? You're just reacting to ethics violations and things like that. Nobody's wondering, or nobody's worrying or caring for the schools and the children and stuff like that, and I think that's one of the things this board is going to have to fix.
What about the school district itself? Not necessarily the Board of Education, but the school district, the strengths and weaknesses?
Oh, this is a great district. I think you have some of the best staff around, and I think if it wasn't for that staff, we'd be in a lot more, a lot more trouble. The biggest issue I think we have right now is the attrition rate of your teachers. I was trying to get some numbers. It's like 10, 12, 15%. And that's an awful number. Now, is that based on salary or based on perks or benefits? Yes, it's based on all of them. They can go up to Woodbridge and get another 20% or 30% increase, and that's not much of a commute. They can go over and get maybe childcare, full-time childcare for free or discounted childcare, if they go to Edison or something like that. We need to keep our most important assets, which are our teachers and, by extension, our administrators and staff. And I think that's the biggest issue we have right now. If we don't, we're going to keep losing 10 or 20% of our good students, or good teachers. They're going to move off. We're going to keep refilling those, those numbers, and they're going to keep moving off. We're basically, we're basically become a training center for all the other districts in this state. We can't do that. Now, I'm not saying throwing money at it is the way to do it. Honestly, I don't know if you could. That's something that has to do with the union and everything like that. But I think there's other ways that you can try to keep the teachers and the staff, right? We talked about having childcare. We talked about giving them discounts on things, or even giving more back from the opt-out program. I think that's, it's a minimal amount that we actually give them back, give them more back. It's still a win-win. We keep our teachers. We don't have to retrain our educational staff. And again, we'll still make a profit on it. We don't have to make all of our programs cash cows. Some of them have to benefit the people and the children that we have here.
Mr. Pelori, did you have a question, follow-up?
Yes. Mr. Masters, we all get on the board to make a difference. The Board of Education, we want to do something positive. But sitting on this side of the table over the last eight months, I can tell you that's fairly frustrating to see that there are constraints on the side of the board on what you can and cannot communicate with public, and you see the public come back and start attacking us for things that they perceive, and there are a lot of rumor mills and untrue statements put on the Facebook. At the end of the day, it becomes a difficult job to accomplish. Are you ready for something like that to go through and still try to make a difference, and if so, how do you plan to do that?
Oh, 100%. If you think back to the last election, what I went through, I don't think any candidate should be subjected to. One of the reasons I even wasn't going to run for the, the election in November was what my children and family were put through in the last campaign. I asked my children, which is a really, really sad conversation to have, if they were okay that Daddy ran again, that they would be impacted and people would attack them verbally and on Facebook. And to have your eight-year-old son tell you that's okay, he's okay with it, I mean, that is a conversation I wouldn't want to have until he's a teenager, at least, right? Even my teenager, who was, was subjected to some verbal insults last year, and he's, he's very emotional, and he has, again, he has an IEP, and he has some anxiety disorder. He was the one who finally said, "You have to do it, Dad. You can't let those bad people win," right? And that's how you refer to everything, to evil people. So, I have no problem doing it. My family has been readied, if anything like that would happen, and I'm sure it will. This is, I mean, the campaigns in this town are as dirty as I've ever seen. I'm sure that will, and I, and I think I'm ready for it. I have no problem with it. Now, back to what the communication, yeah, I've been on the board before, and I know it is frustrating. There's a lot you want to change. You get on there, and then there's a lot you can't change. So, you try to make do with what little you can. You try to come up with some creative ideas. You try to, again, you try to, you have your advocacy committee. You try, you try to advocate. You try to go up to the state level. Again, most of it is try. But again, if you don't try, again, for even being up here and applying for this, then nothing will ever change, right? Again, we'll be that lumbering behemoth again, and we'll just go on, and 10 years will go by, and we'll have failing schools or something like that. So, that's why I'm here.
Mr. Rutske?
If I may. Mr. Masters, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Throwing your hat in the ring. We appreciate it. You mentioned politics a little bit there in a few of your answers, and so my question is, where do you see the role of politics within the Monroe Township Board of Ed?
There should be no politics.
Yeah, we have one minute left.
Okay, so there should be no politics in the Board of Ed. Now, it is a nonpartisan, but again, with that said, every, every board like this is, has some sort of political edge to it, right? What Mr. Pelori is doing at the state level is politicking, and you have to. So, it's one of the things where you don't want to get into your operational, what you're doing on an operational level, but outside, your strategic, your strategic plans have to include some of the politics. Now, again, you have to draw a firewall between those two things and never let that local politics, which we're seeing somewhat, get involved in what we're trying to do here, again, what we're trying to do for the kids. I'm sorry, the drum is, the drumbeat is actually throwing me off.
I'm Mark.
I know, I'm actually trying to talk to that drumbeat.
Okay, so you have 14 seconds, which will take me the last, but you probably won't be able to finish. So, how do we know if our goals are being accomplished?
Well, you, again, just like, and again, I hate to say this, just like a business, you have to have milestones, which we have.
Madam, madam, may I ask that Mr. Masters be allowed to finish? She's the only one here. I think we could waive our...
Absolutely. As long as the board agrees on that.
Situation is, I would ask that the whole board would allow him to finish.
Okay, so let me ask the whole question.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. How does the board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being carried out?
Just to say, if, I'll call you Michelle, if she's for nothing, she is for fairness. I will say that. I can always say that. We might argue on certain things, but she's always been fair. So, how do we, again, I take a business lean on this, right? And when we used to do any kind of our goal reviews, even here or on our, at the bank, you have to have milestones set up ahead of time and make sure you're hitting them. It's a real simple process. If you don't set them up, and again, this isn't, it's a board, it's a collaborative effort with the board and the administration, right? So, you'd have the superintendent come in, and most likely the principals, supervisors, staff, things like that, create goals for the year, create milestones for those goals, and then track back and have, again, meetings where you analyze to make sure you're hitting those timeframes. I hate, again, I hate to apply business, but it, but it works, and it's not too businessy. It really just says, "If you're going to do what you do, make sure you're doing what you do."
Okay, so that concludes the questions. But I just want to ask, did you receive these questions before this evening?
I did not.
Okay.
Although the first one I knew was going to be that one, about why you're here, so...
Well, that's pretty typical. Okay, thank you, Mr. Masters.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your time in advance and for your deliberation time.
So, I assume you're going to be sticking around while we're in closed session, because we shouldn't be very long?
Yes, I will be here.
Okay.
Kathy, may I ask a question before we conclude?
To Mr. Masters?
Not to you.
Okay.
Mr. Masters, leave.
Thank you.
I'm surprised to hear the lady who came up and said that her application was not received. Is there any more information from our side? Is that true, and is confirmed that we haven't received anything?
We have not received anything. There, we looked at the board office today when we found out that she said she applied, and there has been nothing. They went through all the secretaries in the board office. They went through the, the mailroom and everything. There's been nothing. But we all know, too, that sometimes you can't, you can't rely on the post office, but this is a week since she said she mailed it, but we could have done, you know, certified mail. She could have texted the business administrator to see if he received it, and knowing that maybe he didn't, that she could have forwarded to him.
So, it's not like we received after the deadline or anything?
We have not received it after the deadline.
I just want to confirm that.
And no, it was not thrown in the mail.
Okay.
In the trash, you mean?
It is a shame.
Yeah, it is.
Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, I would just like to state that when I received that information, I was upset that she didn't, you know, I didn't know at the time, when I first received the email, that there was no, that it was not received. I thought it was received late. I did ask my colleagues via email if they would consider allowing her to interview. Apparently, that is not going to be the case, but I did make that request of my colleagues. So, if anybody wants to comment on that, I would...
When you say colleagues, who are you referring to?
Well, you are my colleague, sir. My colleague's on the board. I sent an email.
I didn't receive.
Oh, this afternoon, because I just got it this afternoon. You maybe didn't...
Everybody should have received an email or response to Michelle's email. Yes.
Oh, that I didn't get.
No, I had received an email, I had received an email this morning, and as soon as I received the email, we started looking for the package or envelope or whatever. We couldn't find it. And then we did again this afternoon, when we received the second email and your email response. So, there, there is nothing there.
Okay.
So, Ms. Arminio?
No, thank you.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 through 10 colon 4 dash 21, to discuss the following subject, Appointment of a Public Official Discussion of Candidate. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need a motion in a second. Mr. Pelori?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutske. All in favor?
Well, I think...
Oppose, and I'd like to read a statement, please.
I just wanted to, is it one of the opposed?
Opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposing this motion. I'd like to make a statement.
There's a discussion. That's in the discussion.
Well, we don't usually have a discussion when we do a closed session resolution.
All right, so I could read my statement then?
Just read it.
Okay.
I would like the public to know why I will be voting but not participating in this closed session tonight. This applicant we have in front of us just ran this past November, and the taxpayers voted. They sent a clear message that they did not want Masters on the Board of Ed. Since his loss, he has not shown himself at any board meetings, only when he was added by the board president to lead the ad hoc committee. This committee was formed in order to gain the public's trust, trust, involve them more, involve them more, and gain their trust again, so that we can pass a much-needed referendum. Imagine that. The board president putting in charge of person, the taxpayers, didn't have enough confidence to elect to this board. Now, we have this special meeting tonight to fill Ken's position. Two of our members tonight ran a campaign with Mr. Masters last November. Six current board members have publicly and privately endorsed him for that very position he failed to win. In my opinion, the vote tonight has been predetermined and may not be legal, but again, in my opinion, it is unethical. Thank you.
Madam President, I want to ask a question, and this is what the problem is.
Okay.
And I know I want to make it right, but I can't make it right. If somebody does not approve Mr. Masters' application, I have my own feelings about that as well, which I convey to Mr. Masters, why would they go through the entire interview process and then make a statement at the end of all of this?
Well, it's probably inappropriate, and I let that, let that person do it. No, we're not going to have a conversation out here. We are now in closed session. And when we come out of closed session, we will make a resolution. Okay, at this time, the board will come back into public session, and I will read the resolution. Whereas, following the resignation of Mr. Ken Chiarella from the Monroe Township Board of Education, parentheses, "Board," on August 21st, 2019, the board actively sought candidates for this open seat, reviewed one letter of interest and resume, and interviewed the candidate, and having identified a qualified candidate to fill this vacancy on the board. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby appoints Mr. Louis C. Masters to fill... Really? That's uncalled for. To fill the seat recently vacated by Mr. Chiarella, effective immediately and continuing through the 2020 Board Organization Meeting, tentatively scheduled for January 28th, January 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Rutske, Ms. Demeo. It's been a long time since I've seen you, Jill. Any comments or questions? Ms. Lang, Mrs. Lang?
Madam President, I will be abstaining from the vote. I fully support Lou Masters. I think he's a wonderful choice as a board member, and that is why I'm making the decision. Because though it is not legally unethical for me to vote in this vote, I feel it is personally unethical, and I have to follow my own ethics first. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Arminio?
My vote will also be an abstention, because Mr. Masters is also running in the next election, as am I, so I think it would be appropriate for me to abstain. Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, then at this point, Mr. Ryback, we will have a roll call.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Lang abstains?
Abstain.
I vote yes. Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Ms. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalaponowicz?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Arminio.
Oh, I'm staying.
I'm staying, yes. Ms. Kalaponowicz, yes.
Yes.
Madam President, motion passed.
How many yeses, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay.
Six yeses, one no, and two abstains.
Two abstentions.
That equals the nine of us. So, Mr. Masters, I don't know where you are.
There he is.
So, congratulations on your appointment to the Board of Education. And I don't know if you have any comments you would like to make before, you know, we close for the evening?
Name and address, please.
Lou Masters.
Or you could sit at the table, wherever you feel.
I'm Michael. I like it here.
Four minutes, Mr. Masters.
This is fun.
No, he gets, he gets...
Again, thank you for this process, this time. Again, I actually had hoped that there were more people that applied for it, but again, it's a lot of effort and dedication. And again, I hope I can rise to that challenge. Again, I also hope that Mr. Chiarella was on the mend. I know why he resigned, and I hope he's getting better, and he can join us sometime soon. I just want to clear up a couple of misconceptions about me. Yes, I am on the zoning board. There's no conflict. We covered that one. Thank you. My wife does work for Rise. She does not work for Freeholder. I know somebody said that. That's totally incorrect. My wife is not conflicted. She's not part of the teachers' union anymore. I saw people saying, "My wife, I couldn't vote on anything. There's no conflict." I saw people saying, "My wife, I couldn't vote on anything." There's no conflict there. And actually, we've had people on this board that have more of a conflict than that. They've had children and spouses that directly worked for some of the schools. So the only thing, I did consult a lawyer, is I would not be able to talk about the superintendent's evaluation, or not be able to vote on the superintendent's evaluation. I actually would be able to sit on negotiations, and I could vote on the MTA contract. Again, there was no conflict of that. I think that was pretty much it. I wanna thank everybody. I know there's been some really nasty stuff going around. I am now, I guess, known as a maggot coward. Thank you, Mr. Tufano. I think that's great. And actually, I would really check with your ethics on that.
Were you gonna yell at him?
No, I'm not. He has four minutes to speak.
I have four minutes to talk, but again, I do appreciate- Ooh, language. Wow. Again, people walking out of Board of Ed meetings and not committed to these students is what we have to root out. If you remember a quote from Watergate, "It's a cancer. If you let it grow, it will infect everything." And we really have to get rid of that. Again, the only reason I bring that up is that, again, it was a, an actual open threat to me and about attending tonight, so I have an issue with that with one of your board members. And I think it will be investigated by your board attorney. And again, I'm in this for the right things. What was spoken about before, there's actually no campaign law that says if you lose an election, you can no longer run again, right? I've never heard of that. And actually, the taxpayers, only a portion of the taxpayers voted against me. A portion did vote for me. So again, it's an illogical and irresponsible argument to cast, again, dispersions on somebody else because of a issue with them being a maggot coward. And I keep saying it because it's very colorful, and what the hell, I like it. So thank you very much again for your votes. I will do the best I can, and I will collaborate with everybody on this board.
I just wanna let you know, because I think I forgot to say it, you will be sworn in at the October 3 meeting, which is next week.
And I still have my, I think I still have my plaque, so you don't have to purchase another one.
Oh.
If I may, I just wanna say congratulations, and I would, I would actually argue that coward is anything but somebody who throws their hat in the ring and volunteers their time, for whatever the reason, in this case particularly for the kids, not a coward, and we look forward to having you on the board.
Thank you. It actually feels good.
I think most importantly, we gotta put all this behind us very quickly and start working as a board.
You know, as a Board of Education, we don't have to like each other. We don't have to socialize out of this room, but we are all in here. We have an obligation to our students, especially our students, and to our staff. And we have to work together without the name-calling, without the bullying, without the lies that are going on Facebook all the time, with people assuming certain things that are not true. Apparently, I appointed Mr. Masters as the ad-hoc chair, knowing he was gonna run for the Board of Education. I had no idea, and I'm sure Mr. Masters will tell everybody. He had no idea until the end that he was going to do that. So I'm tired of it, and there's no, there's no reason for it. We need to come together as a community, all together, working for the good of the kids. So that's all I have.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, oh, sure.
I know, Board Secretary, but I still would like to just say a few congratulatory words to you. Lou, it's gonna be a pleasure to work with you. I know we've been on different sides of the fence.
Definitely.
But we've always been able to speak and work together, and I think that's, Andy's right. That's what we all have to do as a board, and I guess the proof will be in the pudding. So let's all get together and do a great job for the kids.
And that's actually a perfect example. When we were running against each other, we despised, right? Despised each other. We disliked each other.
Yes, he's speaking for himself.
But again, now I think Mr. Ryback is a great asset to this Board of Education.
Nobody didn't get along more than me and Mr. Ryback. And now we are the best of friends, and we make a good team up here. I believe we do. And we're always here for the same reason. I know I can count on him, and he can count on me. Sometimes your, your first impressions of people turn out to be wrong. And I think that's what we have to do, is learn about people instead of just, you know, believing everything that's out there and not trusting.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
And I need to see you after the meeting then. Okay, so the next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be October 3, 2019, 7 o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School, where we'll be doing the budget philosophy. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. Lang, Mr. Dimeo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.